Now reconvened an open session. We will first consider action on closed session items. Who's ready? Mrs. James?
I move that the board issue a school district teaching permit for CTE Criminal Justice to Tracy Wilson.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Mrs. Tosan, I have another motion.
Yes, Mrs. James.
I move that the board issue a school district teaching permit for CTE Health Science to Joanne Pratt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. James and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Ms...nope?
Yes, Madam President, I have, yes. I move that the Board of Trustees accept the hearing officer's recommendation concerning the Level Four Employee Grievance Appeal of Jasmine Johnson.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Burdine?
Yes, Madam President. I move to propose termination of Mary Schwartz's term employment contract for the 2016-2017 school year for good cause and to authorize the superintendent of his designee to notify Mrs. Mary Schwartz of this action in accordance with applicable law and policy.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Burdine and a second by Mr. Rice. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Rice?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Trustees assign the Level Three Employee Grievance Appeal of Fort Ben Employee Association to Richard Hightower, who will serve as the Board's designated hearing officer under Board Policy DGBA Local.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have discussion? Hearing none, please vote. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, we're moving on to our action items. First, we will consider ratification of the Administration's actions for Drymalla Construction Company.
Madam President, I move to approve the recommended ratification as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mr. George. Do we have a presentation, Dr. Dupree?
We don't have a formal presentation. Rick might want to share a few comments.
Mr. Morris, do you have any...anything to share with us about Action Item Eight A?
The ratification.
Ratification.
Yes, Madam Board President. The Board may recall that in light of a procurement error in the reprocurement of this project, the district issued a directive to Drymalla to suspend work on this project. During the period of suspension and while the district was engaging in a new procurement, there were certain progresses in work that in order to protect the taxpayers, the Administration issued a directive to Drymalla to continue with certain work specified in the letter pending the procurement. And this is simply the Board's approval of the actions taken by the Administration in that regard.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Do we have discussion or questions by the Board members?
Good leadership.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Anyone else? Mrs. James?
I just want to clarify that the letter is in the...on the posted with the agenda so that people can see the actions taken. And thank you for your financial stewardship, Dr. Dupree.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Okay. Please vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Item Eight B. For action, we will consider award of the project for construction of Elementary School Forty-Nine and delegate authority to superintendent to negotiate and execute the contract with Drymalla Construction.
Madam President, I move to approve the recommended action.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Rice and a second by Mrs. James. Do we have a presentation, Dr. Dupree?
We do our inner room COO Oscar Perez will do a brief presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you. As has been previously mentioned, we, based on an internal audit from Legal, it was brought to our attention that they needed to see the advertisements for not only this school but numerous schools. Immediately, we went to Design and Construction, I mean to procurement, asked them to supply the information. And at that point, we realized that this particular project had not been procured correctly and had not been advertised. Let the superintendent know immediately and the ensuing action took place. Since that time, we came to you all and we have received approval to go back out to bid on this. We have done that. It's...those bids have now come in. And so, we're coming to you now with a recommendation to approve Drymalla as the contractor of record to move forward with this project. This project has...there's a couple of items that need to be brought forth. And that is that in order to go ahead and preserve our action as far as finishing, based on the original construction completion date, we ask for an alternate for an accelerated schedule. We received that and that alternate has come in. And part of what that alternate represents is that Drymalla has come in and they've looked at this project. It's coming instead of building it just in one direction, they've looked at building this from two directions. Basically doubling the manpower that they'll have on the job. And, you know, coming from two fronts, you know, as we're building this project. They've gone ahead and also incorporated an additional superintendent and addition...I mean, additional assistant superintendent and additional overtime for the superintendent. They've brought in doser for six months to ensure that the site is always maintained for access, for all the trades to keep the project going. They've added line stabilization of seventy percent of the building pad to provide a stable work surface so that the work can continue. They've added an all-weather road for access and for the heavy traffic to be able to facilitate traffic in and out. And they've added temporary electrical generators for the job offices up until January first, when they finally will anticipate it to get permanent power. There's a lot of additional things that they've done, but these are some of the major, you know, things that they've brought forth in order to try to get this project completed at...on the same time with July seventh and opening in August. The additional cost to do this is what we're requesting is approximately four point nine million dollars. That is above and beyond. And, you know, included in that is, you know, the downtime that we've had over this past month. We'll still have to negotiate and get all that finalized, but we've, you know, put the money in there to cover that. And then also, and another alternate for some additional lighting that's needed on the site. And our recommendation to the Board is to accept this as is with that alternate for acceleration. But we will continue to work with Drymalla in order to look at other options to possibly be able to not expend that full amount and still get our school, you know, open in time. And, you know, those are things that Drymalla has already said that they're willing to sit down with us and see, you know, whatever it is that we can do.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Do we have questions from the trustees? Mr. Rice?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Perez. So if we approve this tonight, then we're moving forward to build this school of one hundred twenty-three thousand four hundred forty square feet in ten months. And Drymalla has outlined a plan to do that. And given that short timeframe, I think I heard you say they have lime stabilization to help dry out the site. They're bringing in temporary AC units to help dry in the building so they can paint and apply finishes possibly before permanent power. They bring...they're bringing in additional superintendents and crews to start the project on multiple fronts and in an effort, considered effort to build one hundred twenty-three thousand square foot school in ten months, which is no small feat. Is there any other alternative that we could have considered? And perhaps this question should be directed to you, Dr. Dupree. What if we chose not to open the school in August? What if we chose to open the school in December as opposed to an August start?
We actually considered that. We bid this as an October completion date to get the full construction cycle. But we felt like the harm to students for mid-year transition, the additional costs related to beginning the year were not ideal and conducive to what the learning experience we want to provide for students in Fort Ben. We felt there would be disruption to the learning environment to families as we tried to transition mid-year. We didn't quantify the costs to do that, but we felt like there would still be maybe not the same extent of cost, but there would be some cost that would have...we would have occurred to accomplish that.
Where are the students coming from? What schools would...is this...this is a relief school, in essence, I suppose.
Yeah, I think most of these students are coming from Oakland, which is already about a hundred and eighty percent capacity. And it's still growing. So that's again a significant risk in waiting. We would have continued to overstress all the schools in that community.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mrs. James?
Well, my question was similar in terms of the timeline and the... and what the options were. But also, let me ask, in this new project budget that's shown here, is that including the shutdown costs, if you will, as well as this new project bid? And is this kind of the all-in budget that you're showing here in the project budget?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So it's including...it's including the suspension costs, I guess what we could call it?
Yes, ma'am. We're, you know, we're still going to negotiate that all out to finalize it, but yes, we have enough to cover that.
Okay. And that's in this budget?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And I...did I understand that we would get some type of information item accounting for the all the...all the costs associated with the suspension and kind of have that sort of laid out for us?
Yes, ma'am, we sure will. It'll be in the form of a change order.
Okay. So we'll see that as right...as right...just like we would normally be updated on the change orders?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I think we're ready to vote. All trustees in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Alright, moving on to review items. Nine A. We will review the proposed 2016-17 goals and objectives that were previously presented to us. Do we have any questions from the trustees on this? Okay. Go ahead, Mrs. James.
I can...we can just...when we talk about the superintendent's evaluation instrument, we can just talk about it all at one time.
Okay, well, let's move to nine B. Reviewing proposed sixteen seventeen superintendent evaluation instrument. Questions, Mrs. James?
Right. So my main question on this was... Well, one of the main questions is student achievement measures. And we have sort of a pending spot for them. But I don't see lined out exactly what our goals are on that or what we're going to be looking at.
Yes, we're actually going to do a little more in-depth update on that next week because we're working right now on the district plan. We have to do a district improvement plan for the state as well as complete the district strategic plan that will relate to the goals and objectives. So as part of the work that we're going to be doing and bringing to the Board in October and November would be student measures that would be inserted at the proper spot in this document once the Board takes action to approve that in November. And you'll get a lot more detail on that. We've been kind of developing this over the last few weeks with some investigation about what we need to be doing and bringing to the Board because there's some changes in our planning processes. We need to bring to the Board's attention, and that's all slated for conversation next week.
Okay. Alright, well, I'll look forward to that. I'll look forward to that.
Thank you, Mrs. James.
Like a surprise.
So by the proper slot, Dr. Dupree, you mean on page six of six where you have the to-be-determined student achievement other measures?
Well, actually, the state assessment would be the initial document. Yes, ma'am. And it's possible the Board would identify other measures this year or that may be something we would plan to, as the Board continues their planning over the next year, to insert into the other measures.
So you're asking for approval of this document next week. But it would need to be approved again after we insert the two pieces that are currently missing as you guys are getting that data and making a recommendation for us.
It would be an update at that point.
Update, okay.
Okay, well, I'd like to just reiterate that I think it's really, really important that we consider student achievement data when we are evaluating superintendent and evaluating our school district. Because if we don't include that, then everything is anecdotal. And it's difficult to...it's difficult to back up and it's difficult to explain our...the progress of our school district. And I think that our Board is very intentional about improving student achievement across all sub-populations and being sure that all of our students have equitable access to the curriculum and to their learning goals. And I'd just like to reiterate that, to me, the superintendent's evaluation instrument is fine as it is, but it needs to, you know, it's fine, but it really is meaningless without the student achievement data considered. And I think it's part of state law that we consider the student achievement data in evaluation, evaluating the superintendent. So those are my comments. I just want to be clear of my expectations.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I agree with that. Mr. Rice?
I would just like to agree with Mrs. James in support of that.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, moving on to nine C. Well, we will now review proposed 2007 and 2014 bond program construction projects, budgets, and related items. Number one is the upgraded electrical service at Willeridge High School and McAuliffe Middle School and a blanket easement. Mr. Perez?
Yes, ma'am, thank you. What we're bringing to you is, if you'll recall, this is a project that was partly funded through Bond 2014 and that was for the Willeridge High School portion of it. There was not any money in the McAuliffe portion in the Bond 2014 and that's why we're, you know, coming in and asking for money from the 2007. What occurred since the time that the bond was approved was that we had some major outages at Willeridge where we had to replace the generator at that point. And in so doing, we found out that we, Fort Ben ISD actually owned the primary service that was leading to... I mean, I said generator, I'm sorry, I meant the transformer, not the generator, the transformer. And so, we found out that we had the primary power belonging to us. And what we wanted to do and what we've brought forth here is to go ahead and get rid of that. We went ahead and bid it out. We are not...we're keeping the transformer that we just, you know, put in. So we will still retain that. So we're...as far as coming to Willeridge, we will bring...our Center Point will bring their power to a certain point stop and then we'll take it from there as secondary to ours. And then at Willeridge, they actually will go ahead and go with the primary all the way and install their generator. And so, that's why we have a cost for Pfeiffer to go ahead and do the construction portion of the work. And then we have the cost for Center Point to do their portion of the work. And then also, you know, we're requesting that we get the blanket easement for Center Point.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Do we have questions on this? Mr. Rice?
Mr. Perez, so I'm understanding when McAuliffe and Willeridge were built back in eighty-one or eighty-two, the district at that time brought in the overhead power and owned the primary power into the site and the transformers. And so, when the transformers go out, we don't call Center Point. We call them a specialized electrical contractor to come replace them. And at this time, we're going to change that and give access, give an easement to Center Point, who will own the overhead primary and the pad mount transformers, with the exception of the one I just heard you say for McAuliffe.
For Willeridge.
For Willeridge. And then if there's any issues with them, then Center Point will take care of them for us and we can get out of that business.
Yes, sir. We'll get out of the high voltage business.
But we needed some money from the oh-seven bond to help fund it?
Yes, sir, because the primary comes right by McAuliffe. And as I said, there was not any money in the bond to do that at the time. So we're...it just behooves us at this point, we're coming right by it to go ahead and get this changed out and just get that away from us.
Is it coming from Post Oak?
Yes, sir.
So that's a long way.
It is, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Additional questions? Okay, C two, construction of the new playground and hard-surface canopy at Heritage Rose Elementary. Mr. Perez?
Yes, ma'am. Once again, this is a school that has shown some tremendous growth and they're at about a hundred percent utilization at this point. And so, you know, based on the ed specs for the new schools, once we get over eight hundred and fifty students, we go ahead and it triggers to have a second playground and cover on the property. We're putting together a plan to go ahead and do all of our schools that are in this situation in order to get them all updated. And we're looking at having that ready either to come with a phased-in plan, kind of like we've done with the Marquis or possibly with the 2018 bond, but we're working that plan together. This is the first school that we're going to go ahead and look at bringing in, you know, putting an additional playground in. So we're coming in, we went through the buy board and we're looking at having this contractor come in and install this playground. And then, once the playground is installed, we have site development of thirty thousand that we would utilize to go ahead and do the ADA accessible path. The contractor that does this work for the playground does not do that type of work. So we will either do it in-house if our forces are able to or we will go ahead and just get a JOC contractor to go ahead and do that portion of the work.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. Mrs. James?
Could you clarify that last sentence you said? What is the part that the...that the contractor doesn't do?
The contractor that installs the playground does not provide the ADA accessibility. So there has to be a path, ADA path, from the school to the playground. They don't do that type of work. They just install the playground.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Can I ask another question?
Thank you. Yeah, go ahead.
Alright, so you kind of alluded to this, but I was trying to... Do we have any idea what number of elementary schools are at a deficit in their playground equipment? Or other deficits that are...other deficits?
We've just started working on that plan, so I don't have that number, but I can bring it back to you all.
Okay. So how did this project get to be a priority then?
The...it came to the district as a building modification. And when we started looking at it, we saw that this campus had that big increase, but there's others that have the same thing. So we were looking at doing this, but then having a plan to continue on with the others.
Okay, well, I think that that's good. And I guess that the reason I'm asking these questions is because, you know, we have a limited amount of funds and I want to be sure we're spending our funds in the area where they're most needed. And it's one thing for principal to send in, you know, a request, if you will. But it seems like it's the people in this room's job to make sure that we're prioritizing the requests in the right way and that we're making sure everybody has equal access to the opportunities. So that's why I bring that up about what other deficits are there and is this the wisest place to spend our money? Because it's two hundred thousand dollars and some of the improvements, some of the bid packages for various campuses are that much. So that's why I asked the question. Does anybody mean?
I agree with that. I agree with that, girl.
So what was the process for making the determination that we should start with Heritage Rose?
Well, the...part of it was to go ahead and just see what the cost was going to be for these so that we can see what the overall, once we extrapolate that out, to see what the overall cost is going to be, you know, with the plan that we bring forth.
So they asked for it? Is that what we're saying?
Correct. They turned in a building mod and we went in and looked at the utilization, you know, looked and saw that there is a need, but there's a need also in other, you know, schools.
I think it would be if, yeah, if we could get that information on what other schools are in need of this type of equipment. I mean, that is the school that my children have attended since it opened, so I know there's a need there. They sit out in a field and really can't play outside because they have no coverage. I know that that school tried for years to fundraise and just does not have the financial capacity to do it. But there are other schools that are in similar situations. So I agree that we need to find out what other schools are in that situation and probably get a plan for that pretty quickly.
If I could just back it up even one more step because we're going to look at some budget amendments down here a little bit further and we've already looked at our...what our contingency funds are and they're kind of dwindling. You know, we can talk about that later on in the agenda, but I just don't know how big of a priority this is and we look...if we look at the overall use of our money in our construction and our whole scheme of construction projects that we have going on. So I don't...I appreciate that Heritage Rose has had a tremendous amount of population growth. I appreciate that they need or would like nice facilities for the kids to play. I just don't have any knowledge to know where this is in the priority of thing and that's why I would hesitate about it.
I wanted to make the comment too. That was my understanding of what you meant, Mrs. James, as far as we have other schools that have maybe some safety concerns and some necessary items that should be taken care of immediately. And I agree that elementary school children do need a place to play and they need it to be a safe place to play. I don't disagree with that. But, once again, we do need to prioritize. It'd be interesting to see that, so.
Mr. Rice?
Well, I think I agree. Mrs. James has brought up a valid point and we need to have that information and understand going forward. But at this point in time, I would be loath to rearrange this project or possibly cancel this project if all of the families and students at Heritage Rose are now thinking they're going to get that. And I think Heritage Rose is maybe seven years old, seven or eight years old?
Six, going on seven, yep.
Anyway, but Mrs. James, you bring up a very good point for us to consider going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, C three, nine C three, the 2014 bond program bid package number eleven, which includes classrooms at Scanlon Oaks Elementary School and Holly Elementary School and renovations at other locations. Mr. Perez?
Yes, ma'am. Once again, if you recall this, we pulled this item from a previous Board agenda because the contractor of record at that point that we were bringing forth sent us a letter saying they were not able to service. We were able to go ahead and break negotiations because we didn't have a contract at that time and we went to the second contractor, which is Teal Construction. We were able to go ahead and negotiate with them and for an additional one hundred and thirty-three thousand five hundred dollars, we were able to bring them to the Board tonight for approval for this project. we were able to bring them to the board tonight for approval for this project. And this, this project, you know, is one that has two ten classroom additions. And so we, we really, you know, at a point, we need to, you know, move forward and get those moving. Uh, and then they also have some renovations in some of the other schools, just some small renovations. But the main, the main two at Holly and Scanlon Oaks are the, the ten classroom additions. And the others have some vestibules that get done and, and, uh, security film, so they're just smaller projects. But I feel really good that we were able to go to the second-ranked contractor and, and just have an increase of one-hundred-and-thirty-three thousand dollars.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Questions by the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal?
Those will be finished for next school year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Other questions? All right, nine C four, professional service firms for the career and technology project. Are we punting, or is it still you, Mr. Perez?
It's still me. This particular one, what we're bringing to you is we, if you recall, back in early May, we came to the board and all the professional services firms were approved, but they were not approved specifically for career and technology. We had not, you know, come to the board with that project at that point. So what we're coming with you is we're, we're asking for approval of these firms so that we can go ahead and get the survey going and get the geotechnical going for that project. And then, uh, once, we, we have another item here for schematic design, and upon schematic design approval and further development of that, then we would get additional proposals to be able to do the materials testing and the commissioning. We can't get those at this point, but we do want to have you all approve the actual firms. And a commissioning agent would be engineered out balance, geotechnical, avalas engineering, and they would eventually do material testing and west belt surveying for the, for the land surveying and TAB technologies for the test aligning and balancing.
Thank you, Mr. Perez. Do we have questions from the trustees? Okay, we are going to skip number five and go to number six, and we'll come back to number five. Um, number, nine C six is budget amendment regarding the use of the two thousand fourteen bond program contingency. Mr. Perez? You're not out of the hot seat yet.
So, um, what, what we're bringing here, this is a, a new item that we're bringing forward. But what we're bringing is we're showing that, you know, based on bid package six, which is elementary forty-nine, and this bid package eleven, we're needing an additional seven million, three-hundred-and-ten thousand and thirty-three dollars to come forth. What, what we've done is we've, we've gone in, and I, I think you may recall Exhibit A, which we've been bringing to the board, you know, as we come in with the items and we talk about Exhibit A and how we move monies in and out. So in, in, in order to go ahead and cover this, what we did is we, we infused some money from elementary forty-seven, the additional savings that we have, we're at a point now that we feel comfortable that we can take a million and a half and, and go ahead and put into contingency. And there's still some additional money there and all, but we feel comfortable with a million and a half. And then also with some classroom additions that we are not taking forward at this time, we're, feel that we can bring three million, a little over three million dollars also in in order to cover these amounts from bid package six and bid package eleven. With that being said, that leaves us at this point with only seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars to date. Now, this, and contingency, now, this concludes everything that we have in phase one. So we still have phase two and phase three contingencies that are uncommitted. Uh, we haven't touched those. Now, you know, we will be coming forward with that. But this is, this basically, to this point, concludes everything that's bid for phase one.
So, just a clarifying question. So the seventy-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-forty-seven is the balance of the contingency for phase one only?
Correct. And, and obviously, um, you know, our, our predictions all along as we were looking at this and, and, and looking forward, we were not banking on that additional four million for forty-nine. You know, that's what's really got us down to that seventy-seven.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Perez. Questions from the trustees? Mr. Rice?
So, Mr. Perez, how many other phases do we have? Two others?
Yes, sir, we have two other phases to, to move forward, and those are mainly lifecycle renovation phases.
Lifecycle renovations, and they have contingencies in them?
Yes, sir.
So, program reserves, contingencies and program reserves?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Lifecycle renovations, so like windows, roofs, HVAC?
Correct.
Okay. Because we've taken a pretty good hit on, and I guess, Dr. Dupree, maybe I should direct this question to you. What process or what, what have we changed now in procurement to make sure that we, we advertise correctly?
I'm actually going to let Steve, I asked him to prepare for that question because I think that's a, a very good question. Steve?
Uh, yes, sir. So we, we've definitely talked about this and addressed this in the, within the purchasing department. Uh, we were double-checking the files. Uh, we did, uh, just agree to have Tasbo come in and do a, an independent review of our procedures and to look at all of our, all of our processes. Dr. Dupree just looked at that today, as a matter of fact, and I just notified Tasbo. Uh, but we have that in place, and so they'll come in and they'll verify that. And then from a, secondarily, because it is as important as it is, Oscar's team is also looking at that whenever they have the program files for their, for their, you know, significant projects, they're checking the advertisement as well to just to double-check. So both departments are doing.
So, Mr. Perez, you'll have someone in your department actually get the Chronicle out and check to make sure the advertisement was placed?
Yes, sir, we're, we're doing that, plus we're also asking for an affidavit back from procurement that we put that in our procedures manual now that we, once we give them the information, it gets advertised and we get, we get a signed affidavit back to us showing that. So we, we put just a, a lot of steps in there to make sure this doesn't occur again.
Okay. Uh, do you, so my last question is, although today we have the seventy-seven thousand surplus, many of these projects have not started construction or just barely started construction. Do you feel confident that we'll be able to manage them and successfully complete them within the budgets that are already established?
Yes, sir, we feel with the contingencies that we have in these phase one projects that we should be able to bring them in within, within the budgets that you all approved.
Very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Thank you, Mr. Rice. Additional questions? I have one. Uh, Mr. Bassett, you said that you're looking at having Tasbo come in and do an independent review of the processes. What does that, what does that entail exactly?
Well, I mean, they're, they're actually going to have a team of folks that are going to come in. They're going to look at all of the, uh, all of the bid files from, uh, over the past year through, back to December twenty-fourteen. They're going to be taking a look at each one of those files for completeness and accuracy, making sure that what we have in place going forward is, is solid to be able to give us some comfort that what did happen on this was more of an anomaly and not something that's systemic. And so that's one of the things that specifically they're going to be looking at. They're going to be checking out some of the other things that are, that are new to purchasing with regard to, uh, federal requirements, Edgar and things like that. They're going to check to make sure that we're, that we're up to snuff on that. But, uh, but anyway, we're, uh, we're going to be engaging them to make sure that everything's ready for the, for the new director once we do have that new director hired.
So I assume we will get a report that will have recommendations in them if, if anything's found or if there's any breakdown in procedures or processes? Uh, and when, when are, when is that going to take place?
Uh, the, the timeline hasn't been finalized. I actually just, uh, sent the note for the, uh, our, our contract to get looked at by legal. They haven't looked at it yet. And so it's going to a little bit, take a little bit of time to get that done. But hopefully, we'll be able to start that process, uh, uh, by October.
Okay. Thank you. Mrs. James?
Thank you. I'd like to go back to the, to the spreadsheet again, Mr. Perez, that you were sharing with us about the bond program contingency. And you said that was all the phase one projects, and you think all the phase one projects are on that spreadsheet? Is that what I understood you to say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And then, as part of the two thousand fourteen bond, is there a phase two and a phase three? Or is, is, is all of that in the two thousand and fourteen bond, the fa, what you're referring to is phase two and phase three?
Yes, the fourteen bond has a phase one, which is what we're, you know, once we get all these approved, we'll be completing as far as getting approvals for. And then there's a phase two and a phase three. Phase two, at this point, we're at the point that we're bidding some of those projects, we'll be bringing them forth. Phase three, we're just getting, we've given the architects that you all have approved a letter of commitment, and now we're starting to go ahead and get them on board. And the reason for that is to not have all the work happening at once and have it, you know, spread out in three phases.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that it's not the total capital project plan that we talked about, phase one, phase two, and phase three. This is phase one, phase two, and phase three within the two thousand fourteen bond.
That is correct.
Okay. So thank you for that clarification. And then, um, in terms of the dollar amounts, what percentage of the total four-hundred-and-eighty-five million dollars is in phase one versus phases two and phase three? Just so I reckon, I can understand how much, how much the dollar amount is. Do you know what that is?
I, well, I, I would need to get it back to you because I-
That's fine, that's fine. I'd rather you not guess. I'm just trying to understand. In other words, of the dollar amounts of the projects we've gone through, what percentage of that of the total bond program is that? So I'm trying to understand how comfortable I feel with this seventy-seven thousand dollar number, frankly.
Phase one is the largest portion of it.
Look at it. Tell me if I'm off base. I see two-hundred-and-eighty-three million as of September for the proposed budget. So we budgeted two-eighty-three out of-
Two, four-eighty-five or whatever it was?
It's a little more than half is in phase one.
Okay.
But the, the good news is that the, the lifecycle things that we have been doing, those have been coming in under budget. And so the, the bulk of the work being done in phase two and phase three has been on the lifecycle and efficiency side. And so we're, we're optimistic. That's the reason why we have some optimism in terms of being able to complete things within the, within the allotted budgets.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bassett. That, that does make me feel a little bit better, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Rice?
Well, I, I was just, Mr. Perez, I'm not so confident that the lifecycle will yield savings. The new work has not yielded savings, and the lifecycle work has unforeseen conditions in it. So I'm really not confident we'll see savings in there. And I, I think we should just be, we've got to be very careful and use the best due diligence we can and manage those budgets, forecast costs, manage the costs, and stay within the budget.
Yes, sir, and we, and that's what we do. We'll continue to, to monitor. We're, we're getting our estimator to look at everything, you know, at fifty percent and then ninety percent again, so we'll know where we are.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Okay, going back to nine C five, the schematic design for the CTE Center.
We have Jennifer Hendrickson from Stan Tech to kind of talk you through this presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Dupree, President Tasson, Board of Trustees, Oscar. Since you last saw us, can you hear me? Can you hear me now? Since you last saw us in July, we've been very busy, so we're excited to present where we are today, the schematic design of the District Career Center.
Yes.
Just click, or?
Oh, here, let me see. Let me see that, make sure that's on. I thought you were asking about your mic. Sorry. Now it is on.
All right, let's try it again. So just to remind you, we have four career communities, and there's thirteen programs inside the career communities. And these colored coding will be important as we look forward to the plans. They'll relate to the spaces on the floor plan. And when we met with you back in July, the base scope, the program that we're working with, is around one-hundred-and-seventy-seven, four-hundred-and-ten square feet for the base scope, which is the CTE building itself. We're also providing the sixth class, classroom alternate. We're going to draw that and price that out as requested. It was an alternate scope, and that's around ten thousand, five hundred square feet for the sixth classroom. So the base scope and the classroom alternate. We are pursuing lead certification on this project. Our target is a certified level. We are tracking right now forty-six points. There's one or two that could probably come into the yes category, but we're trying to be conservative to make sure we hit it. But we're right in the sweet spot, forty to forty-nine points is the range, so we're in the upper end, so I'm confident that we'll get there. I won't go into all the details, but, you know, the major categories, sustainable science, water efficiency, energy and atmosphere, materials and resources, and indoor environmental quality, those are the major categories. And underneath are the credit points that we're pursuing. Many of them are in your design standards and very similar to what we pursued at Sullivan Elementary School. And we are pursuing some innovation in design points. So we're looking good there. Just to remind everybody, we are in the Telfair site. Um, see, is it the red dot that I pushed for the laser? Great. So this is the sixty-five acre site, and we're consuming a portion, so that's the CTE site. It's at Highway six in Alt Ninety. The key thing to note here is University Boulevard in Chatham in this shape, because this is the shape that we're going to zoom in on tonight. So we want to make sure that we pay attention. We have a lot of frontage along University, a great corner intersection, Chatham Avenue. This green space right here is really the access zone for students, visitors, as well as the enterprise entries. The zone in here in the middle is, this is a generic shape when we just kind of zone the site for the site constraints. So it's a generic rectangle, but we know we're going to have a corner piece, and we'll have to have some element that faces University Boulevard because there are five enterprises, so we have a lot of front doors above and beyond just the CTE facility itself. In the back portion, we'll be developed for parking and elements like that. So rotated the slide, but it's the same shape. The pay attention is along the bottom is University Boulevard, over here is the Chatham, and the green shape is our site. I'd like to highlight how we've separated the vehicular patterns and then the pedestrian patterns. So I'm going to start with the cars first. A couple of things to note, the blue numbers right here, one through five, are the enterprise entries. And the pink spots, C over here for the student, and A and B are the front door and the event multipurpose space that's adjacent to it. So those are your key destination points. So along University, the students will come in and park in this large parking lot over here. And we've got about five-hundred-and-fifty-four spaces on that side of the facility. They will proceed through this pedestrian pathway into what we call the gateway. Then they'll decide which side of the facility that they'll go to, or they can hang out in the exterior courtyard on a great day. If you're a student arriving by bus, you're going to come in off of Chatham, come around the back, and there'll be a drop-off zone right here, as well as right here, and the bus will go back out. We do have a canopy along here and into this edge of the building, so on inclement weather days, there is a protected access into the building. On great weather days, they can join everyone else in just, you know, the natural progression through the, the plaza in the middle. If you're a visitor coming to one of the enterprise entries, primary destination will be off of University. Come in, there's plenty of parking along the front. We have three enterprises right here, the first one being the education and training, this one being cosmetology, and then a lease space, which is targeted right now as a credit union space. So there's plenty of parking here where you can park at your destination and go straight into your enterprise. There's more public parking over here on the right-hand side where you can visit- There's more public parking over here on the right-hand side where you can visit the grill that's associated with the culinary program, and it also serves... We'll look inside the multipurpose event space where you can host large gatherings for the campus as well as other district events. The main entry for the visitors, if you're a parent or something, would be through a secure vestibule right here. So, there's plenty of parking out in this zone. These one, two, three, four spots add up to about 355 parking spaces. And in the back, the purple line represents services. So, if they're delivering services to the culinary program, which is in this zone, they'll come back here. Our back across the back, we have our design and innovation career community, so it's transportation, manufacturing, advanced construction. They have associated service yards with them. So, this service yard is associated with the transportation or auto tech. So, there'll be a signage out here, much like when you go to the car dealer, crawl around back, and then you come in, and the enterprise entry will be right here. But this is where they can store their materials as well as vehicles. And then, the next service yard is shared between the advanced construction, the manufacturing, which is welding, and the STEM. So, this service yard is where they might house the trailer for the tiny house or something like that. So, we've quarantined the service yards to make sense to the appropriate users on the back. This white portion is our building, and it's two-story, along University and around the corner. And back here in the back is high, like one and a half story, the shops and things like that. It'll make sense on the plan. This little gray hatch is where we're planning for the classroom addition. It's three classrooms on the ground floor and three classrooms on the second floor, so we're maximizing... Minimizing our footprint on the site, trying to keep it as compact of a building addition as possible. Pedestrian, if you're... I kinda covered some of that. The students would walk through this promenade space. If you're visiting your enterprise entries, you park here, and there'd be sidewalks. There is a sidewalk that goes all the way around up through the front, so there's great pedestrian access all around the entire perimeter. So, I'm gonna go to the floor plan. Same orientation as the building, so University is down here, and Chatham is over diagonal this way. So, the blue spots represent the enterprise entry, so this is the education and training. This is the credit union one. This is cosmetology. Over here is the grill. Back here is the transportation. The front entry for visitor would be through the secure vestibule. Either go to admin, or if you're coming for a large meeting space, you'd be able to have controlled access into this event space without having to penetrate deep into the facility. So, we're trying to keep that isolated, but also have ability to open up in the future. This wall right here will be movable, so it can open up and capture this out collaboration space, which is circulation space with flexible furniture, so it'll provide maximum flexibility for growth. The students come in from the parking down the promenade. There'll be a perimeter fencing, so this is controlled courtyard. This is an open courtyard, and this is the parking zone. The bus drop-off is right up here, so there'll be a covered pathway on inclement weather day to get into the facility. So, I'm gonna start, if it's all right with you, in this lower right-hand corner and go clockwise, and then handle the middle part. The color coding, just so you understand, the blue, the green, this brown, and the orange, with the exception of the kinda brownish color, which is the admin area, they translate to the career communities. The gray spots that you see here, the dark gray and the light gray, those are building supports, so mechanical spaces, restrooms, building support services. And then, the lighter gray, you can see the circulation path. And in the middle, the yellow part is the academic or shared spaces amongst all the programs. So, just to kinda orient you that way, I'll start the... I do wanna, before I go into the details, share with you that we've had several user group meetings. We've had... Meredith has sat down after we've developed the plan with representatives from industry and shared and reviewed the plans with them, and she's received positive feedback. So, just like the program, we checked with the industry and got some feedback. We're doing the same process on schematic design as well. So, she's received some really great feedback. Mostly, it's thumbs up with one or two tweaks in the culinary, which are just move this, move that, look at the ratio of dry storage versus cooler space, but no major oops, you got something in the wrong space. They're really on board with the layout. They've also... She's also spoken with the local junior colleges and technical colleges and confirmed that, if not all, help me if I'm right, all of them, will receive dual credit as they move forward through their secondary, post-secondary pathways. So, that's great news. So, we've reached out to business as well as the university strand. And then, just the programs themselves, like cosmetology or transportation, by going through the program, they will come out with certification that they can go straight into the workforce. So, those are all very positive. So, with that preamble, I'll start with this lower right-hand corner and make my way around. So, the first orange area is education and training, so this is for forty kids. They're three-year-olds and four-year-olds, twenty of each, that will spend their day here, but it's for the educational program to learn elementary ed, how you get ready to become an elementary ed teacher. So, it's... We've met with the folks to help us design the layout of the space, to make sure there's appropriate controlled access at the front door, as well as support space for a director and staff, appropriate open space in the middle to move around through the activities during the day, and an observation room in the back for the students to come in and observe what's happening without impeding on the actual activities in the class. It's complete with its own little kitchenette, so they can serve the kids the appropriate snacks, and there's outdoor protected with a fence play area. Moving next door, this green bar is the health science program, and there's two major components to it. These two classrooms share a simulation-like hospital room in between, so it's the hospital component. This side over here is a physical therapy component, complete with a pharmacy tech area, ISO Lam, and a aqua therapy. So, you could grow this program and discuss some partnerships with a potential hospital to help grow this into like a little mini PT space. So, that's why we located it on the first floor. It's not an enterprise now, but it's positioned so that if you wanted to, and it made sense, it was in the right location. This orange space right here is the credit union space. If it doesn't end up being a credit union, it's designed to have its own entry, have its own restroom, so you can control that space. It's about a thousand square feet. That was budgeted in the program. Very prominent location, front door, easy walk-up. Cosmetology is next to it. Their front door is right here. And the way this is laid out, in the center is the classroom living lab, which has hair services. And over on the left-hand side is where the... I'll call it the public might come and consume. There's pedicure station, nail salon, and esthetician. So, that's where the consumer would come, complete with a color bar. Right up here along the front, if you were standing out in the hall, you could look in and see into the two large classrooms. So, that's kinda cool. The admin space is right on the corner with the main door coming through the secure vestibule, the reception. Some key things to note, it's like your typical admin space, but there is space for the principal of this facility, plus a touchdown space for district CTE admin to come over here and touch down in this space, complete with a break room and a workroom, nurse area, and the appropriate records and storage inside that brownish color box. I'm gonna talk about the event a little bit. It's a large multipurpose space. We can have large group meetings. It has a dividing partition here, so you could separate it. This is approximately 368 people at eight top tables. You know, if you're thinking like the Education Foundation, that big table with eight chairs, you can fit about 368 people here. We do have a sliding folding partition here that... There's another forty seats over here, so this whole area could seat 400. Plus, if you open this up, you have the ability to seat more out here. So, it has flexibility to grow to the right and to the top. If you don't wanna seat everybody in the grill, this could be your VIP room, your presentation prep, you know, green space room, and you would come right into the event space. The presentation area will be set up here, as well as when this divides in half, we'll have some presentation on the north and south. The grill is a... It's like a come-in, it's forty seats, if you will, to be mixed seating there, so some four tops, some banquet seating, so a variety of seating to expand on the services they provide today. So, it could turn into a little restaurant that could serve food every day. The culinary program here, this is their learning lab, so there are two teaching kitchens with appropriate support. Service would come in from the back. There is a coffee shop on this side, so a counter that serves the student side, and then a more formal counter that serves the public side. And the waiter station is in between to service both functions. So, we've met with our food service consultant and some folks inside of Fort Bend to help develop that, and some of the great feedback that Meredith got regarding this space, she met... Is it okay if I share the names of the people we met? Sodexo and Brinker, they're people that run Chili's and do major catering events, so they gave us some feedback from a... If I'm gonna serve this large space, what would some minor tweaks be? And they're very minor tweaks versus a teaching laboratory. So, it's making it very versatile. So, we'll incorporate that feedback as we move along. And it's simple things like move the office closer to the back door, move the dishwasher this way. I mean, little bitty things. But overall, they love the concept. Skipping back to the back, this blue container is the transportation or auto. So, this is your enterprise entry, much like if you were to go to a Jiffy Lube, a place to congregate, do your transaction, watch your car, getting worked on. We'll have a safe path through here to come out and buy a cup of coffee and go back out. We have five bays that will serve auto as well as a bus bay, so you could, in theory, grow to... If you want. You'll be able to serve your district buses here as well. So, that's how we've laid this out. They do have their own little dedicated classroom that's associated with that, and some changing space to allow for the certification when they come out from the program. The next space is the manufacturing, which is really the welding, so there's twenty welding booths. There's places to put their lockers and change into their coveralls. They also have access to the changing area. There's the welding booths are on both sides, so you can monitor the activities, and there's large open space in the middle for the building and the cutting. And they have direct access outdoors as well as the transportation. This is the service yard here. They have about twelve feet that's covered immediately outside the building, but then this is all open controlled access service yard for transportation. This is a service yard back here that's shared between manufacturing, advanced construction, and STEM. They all have access out into that service yard, so they can share materials. The advanced construction is the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing trades. So, over here on this side, we're going to mock up systems, you know, a little air handling unit, electrical, wiring, testing. So, this will be their lab space, and here will be some build space. Next to them is the STEM program, and it's really a large open space that will house three classrooms. The reason why it's open and flexible, and we do have a connection between STEM and advanced construction, is UIL robotics, or robotics is now UIL endorsed, so they have a large enough space to do some practicing inside their space. Those are all the blue. This is the classroom addition on the right, so three classrooms, just a corridor and the connector piece. So, if we were not able to afford the classroom addition, the building perimeter would go here up, and then the STEM would be the edge of the base project. If we are able to afford the classroom addition, then the perimeter is extended out to include those classrooms. Now, the yellow spaces in the middle are the fun spaces that are shared by all the career programs. These dark yellow ones, this one right here and this one right here, there's two on each floor. It's a teacher station, teacher work center. Inside this area is space for ten teachers. They have a conference room, a workroom, a planning room, and a staff toilet. So, that's here as well as across the way. Neglected to mention the medical science lab that's shared between health science and cosmetology as well as culinary, so a shared lab between those three programs. These three here and the fourth one across the way are your classrooms that are gonna be shared by the programs. Adjacent to both of those are the instructional pull-out space, a medium conference, a small conference, and an area where we're distributing what we're calling the professional library. So, the library in this area would relate to these programs. The library over here would relate to these programs, the same instructional pull-out space, medium and small conference. These yellow spaces around here and here are large collaboration spaces where either two blue groups can get together to do a group activity, or a green and a blue. We've called this kinda where the fashion show could happen. Cosmetology could get everybody ready to go. Culinary could cater it. There's a cutout in the floor. Broadcasting could film it, and we've got a learning stair right here, so you've got a built-in amphitheater. So, we have some flexibility to make it super cool. The cars can come out, and when it's time to show off their car, they can be right here. So, it's really, really neat. We do have some other little spaces along the way that are collaboration spaces as well, but the ones here at the corners are probably the most exciting one. And we do have a college and career center here at the front door. I'm gonna go to the second floor. It's same layout, much simpler. The white spaces are the high-volume spaces for the transportation, and this is manufacturing, advanced construction, and STEM. We do have mechanical spaces that serve those areas directly. The programs that are up here, this red block over here is arts and AV. That's video broadcasting as well as sound engineering. So, there's a sound room here that controls the video broadcast, and there's some little sound rooms here. So, this control room controls the large space plus the two next to it. This is a computer lab over here for animation. This is information technology, and it's set up with a data room and a server room. And inside here is maker space as well as the classroom, and it's gonna be set up with an overhead rack. So, it really looks like they're gonna connect the computers together. It's really a working network lab on display, so it's creating that real-life environment and getting a chance to experience it in high school. Sandwiched between, I'm gonna go a little out of order. This is a large group instruction space with storage across. It's... This is about two large classrooms. This classroom over here is about, I think, 800, if I remember off... So, if you just kinda squint, this is huge. So, we... Our story that we talk about during design is when Meredith's bringing all the elementary schools over here for field trips, she takes them through the building, which we're calling a 3D textbook, but they can congregate in the event space at the beginning, or they could congregate up here. It's a place to get a large group of people together and tell the story. This orange block right here is law and public safety. The key components are a courtroom, which has, complete with deliberation and jury room, so it's set up so you could have your jury out here, come into court. It's next to the PE, or physical activity space, for the police officers, where they'll be simulating police activities. It's the 911 operator right out here, so you can see what's happening. And then, the campus police is located right here, easy access to everybody. And over here nearby is the evidence processing, so it's more like the forensics component of the law and public safety. Up in the blue... Oops, I take that back. Admin. We added, when we're reviewing the progress with folks as well as Fort Bend administration, a counselor suite up here, so we've got a space for two counselors and a reception up on the second floor. This blue is agricultural and natural resources, and it's two large laboratory spaces with a folding partition to be as flexible as possible, to have either two simulation, whether it be maritime or oil and gas, whatever. You could set it up in either A or B, or if you have one big large simulation space, it can open up, and the two classrooms and shared storage in the back. The yellow that goes around the space is a mirror image from the floor below. So, teacher work center here for another ten teachers, another teacher work center up here, and we have more classrooms up here, so there's three, three, and then two in the back. So, a grand total of twelve classrooms in the whole facility. We still have the same collaboration space, instructional pull-out, small and medium conference, and the collaboration space in the middle. Whew. So, hope I didn't go too fast. I hope I didn't tweet it, but I hope it was enough detail to get you excited about it, because we're super excited about it.
I think you did a very nice job.
Any questions you might have?
Thank you, Ms. Hendrickson. Do we have any questions from the trustees? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes. I was curious about the...
I was curious about the, what seems to me in overabundance of student parking. So my question was, what percent of students at the current Tech Ed Center actually drive?
We currently have very, very limited parking, so we don't allow students to drive to the existing facility. At this facility, we anticipate that we will still have to bus some students from every campus to provide them the opportunity. But hopefully, we'll have more students that are experiencing kind of internships and things like that that will require that they drive their own vehicles. There's also additional parking because of the large group space in case we're having district meetings and other people at the campus at that time.
Okay. And I know there was some concern in our previous discussions about flood zone, and I know it's theoretically not in a flood zone.
Correct.
But, but some community members just threw it out there to me. What would it take to actually raise that site just a little bit, just to make sure that we didn't end up? Because I'd hate to flood out a brand-new facility.
Our finished floor will be determined, once we get the topographic survey we're waiting on. That'll tell us how the terrain, if it's flat or if it's sloping a certain way. We have, the city will tell us, we have to set our finished floor a certain height above the nearest manhole. So my guess is the pad will be built up. Where our building is going to be will go up, as opposed to sitting right on the ground. I don't have that number.
Okay.
Maybe eighteen inches or something like that, is it?
I'm sure, well, I'm sure we'll get to that at some point. We'll see that. Okay, thank you. One of the other, I have two other questions. On the automotive side, you said that there would be, there would be facilities to repair our own buses?
There's a bus bay, I remember the last bay is the bus bay. And this is a bay where there could be a car here and a car here, so one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight cars in the bus bay.
Would that, would we include facilities to repair our CNG buses? Or work on those CNG buses that we're supposedly getting?
He was already ready for it. He was ready for it.
Okay, we wanted to make sure that the opportunity to train students, we need mechanics, and we need to take advantage of the opportunity to teach them. So we will give them vehicles, not that we put into service with students on, but we give them vehicles to work on so that they can be trained to be mechanics. And we will give them, if they get some CNG opportunity for training there, we'll provide that also. But they won't be doing services on vehicles that circulate on the road.
That makes sense. That's probably a good thing. Just in case. And my only other comment was, I'm happy to see a possible maritime program. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Questions? Mrs. James?
I had a question on the information technology section on the second floor. What is the capacity of that space or that program? Mrs. Wadasek, maybe that's a question for you.
It's currently designed for two teachers to be in lab space simultaneously with classrooms, classes, sizes of twenty-four students. So forty-eight students inside lab space in a morning session, afternoon, however many sessions we determine to run during the day. The reason we have the additional twelve yellow classrooms, if you will, is because we may expand that to a third teacher, and then they rotate in and out of the labs. So all of that's been taken into consideration.
Okay, that's good. I, I can see that as a high need and potentially a high interest in one, a program that could potentially have a lot of growth to it because of the employability of the students with the proper certification. So it just, compared to some of the other boxes, it looked like this kind of a small box, and I just wasn't sure.
It's a pretty big box.
It's a pretty big box.
Around two thousand square feet.
Okay. Okay. Would it be possible, maybe in the next week or something, to sort of have a rough square footage on each of the different colors or bissection or anything like that? Would that be possible? You rattled some of them off, and I was trying to write them down, but...
What level of detail do you want it at?
I just wanted kind of a general, for example, information technology, that space you said, you said two thousand square feet.
Sure.
And I think on, on the, well, you said the credit union space was a thousand square feet. That's the only other one I wrote down. So either numbers of people accommodated or square footage, just so I can have a general idea. I'd appreciate that.
If you wanna go back, we've tracked our schematic design. I can certainly provide it to you, what our layout shows, but we've compared our SD against the, you have that orange book that we looked at and approved in July. We're tracking against that. So in many cases, we're spot on. So no one has gotten smaller. And inside, like health sciences, where we added the farm tech and some other spaces, we've tried to, as much as possible, stay inside the parameter and squeeze a little bit here to get that space. So, but I'll definitely be happy to provide the information.
All right, I'll look for my orange book, too. And also, I appreciate the collaborative spaces and sort of the flex spaces. I noticed that all throughout the buildings, and I think that's really good. That aligns with our Ed specs and our Twenty First Century Learning concepts. So thank you for pointing those out to us.
That's the part that's gonna make the building dynamic, right? Because in their current facility, each career has its spot. But to be able to mix with your friend, like culinary and transportation doing something, or these guys coming in here, that's where the magic is gonna happen, when you get the programs working with each other.
Yeah, I also like the outdoor courtyard area, and I, I mean, I can envision that being a collaborative space also, as you say, on the nice weather days. But I also thought, okay, yeah, so anyway, I would love to see this some square footage.
Sure, absolutely.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Berdine?
I'm really excited about this. This is, it looks great. In the law and public safety area, does it say, I'm gonna have to go get my glasses here in a minute, but simulation room, is that for...
It does say simulation room.
And that's for, we talked about for, about training for law enforcement, so...
Yes, sir.
It can have real life.
So if you can imagine standing in a room where three sides of you are all screens, so it will give the students an opportunity to respond to what would be happening out in real life with a teacher in there helping guide them and direct them. It could also be a training facility for our own police department, or anyone else that we might want to.
Thank you very much. I'm excited.
Thank you, Mr. Berdine. Mr. George?
Sure, if you wanna use it, you go right ahead.
Mr. George?
This is absolutely very exciting thing for me. And I have a couple of questions. One is actually, Ms. James actually touched on the area for information technology and also health science. Again, I don't know the details of it. So I don't know how many courses we are going to offer in the health science area. And, you know, to me, when I look at the colored area, it looks smaller area comparing other spaces we are dedicated for other programs. So how many, I mean, do we have any idea how many programs we are going to offer? And do we, are we dedicating enough space for that? And I'm just, I'm just curious, you know. And also, are we in contact with the local hospitals, nursing schools, you know, CNAs and all that, you know, people who offer programs, so we can learn better from them?
Yes, sir. Can we go back one screen?
To the floor.
We've actually had Methodist at the table, Texas State Technical College, who is looking to do most of our dual credit, HCC. We've had Texas Women's at the table, talking about what that space should look like. And so what is inside that green box over on the right-hand side? In order to offer students the opportunity to sit for a pharmacy technician certification, all of the requirements change in 2020. So one of the spaces has been carved out to meet what we need to be in place by 2020. We'll be a little bit ahead of our game, so moving in the right direction. There are simulation rooms where there will be four hospital beds, so that that will work alongside of the certified nurse's assistant. The physical therapy space or the activity space is set so that it is, provides enough room for someone to be a PT assistant. We've also been in discussion with both TSTC and HCC, what does this look like if we wanted to do EMT? How do we roll that out at this facility versus what are we keeping on a home campus? So to answer the question, at home campuses, health science is currently offered at all eleven of our campuses. Those courses will stay there. Our more advanced courses where they're sitting for the industry certifications, the dual credit, the Level One certs, will all be at this facility because of the equipment need, and we do have adequate space. So this space is designed so that there's three full-time teachers in a lab. So it could be expanded to a fourth teacher by utilizing that, that yellow space and rotating lab.
Sure. At a time, how many students we can be serving at this, as we planned at the moment?
So currently, we have estimated that we would serve a thousand students per rotation. So at our existing facility, we have an AM...
The whole facility? No, I'm talking about health science.
Health science. So we calculate everything on twenty-four to one, with the exception of, like, our welding is calculated on a twenty-to-one. In order to meet dual credit standards, you have to have one-to-one, so the number of welding booths that we have and things like that, it's a twenty-to-one for safety reasons.
Okay, okay. And I have the same question about information technology, because that's the future, and we could, we should definitely be serving more students, and there should be more, more interest. And is that the same situation? You're well thought out? Everything is planned? Because I don't know, I'm just asking.
Absolutely. So I think that over time, if we have the extra six classrooms to the right-hand side, we certainly increase hand over fist what we could do. Some of the other things that we are looking at is how do we schedule this campus? Because it may be that we're scheduling a little bit differently at this campus so that we get a third rotation, meaning we may start before traditional high school, finish a little later, so we get a third rotation in there and service more students. So we are currently looking at that so that we're ready in 2018 for what that might look like.
And also, maybe another question I have is talking about those alternate school classrooms. Is that, you're leaving that as an option, or is that going to be part of the plan?
Well, we will draw it. The budget is established, so we wanna make sure we can afford the base building. We will draw it as an alternate. It will be an optional alternate. If we can afford it inside our current budget, then it would happen. If it's outside our current budget, then Fort Bend would have to decide whether they pursue it or not.
And, but that can be built anytime? You're leaving that option as, it can be built even later?
Yes, it could be built later. We're planning for it later. Your, your best financial opportunity would be build it all at one time.
Sure, sure.
But yes, it could be done at a later date if needed.
Absolutely. I, I, a lot of stuff I, I'm very excited to see, and thank you, and I'd like to see this soon.
Thank you, Mr. George. Okay, thank you, Ms. Hendrickson. I'm very excited about it. I was very excited to look at it in detail. And so I appreciate your being so thorough this evening and for being here at ten thirty-five.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna skip around and take nine E3 out of order, which is the interlocal agreement for improvements to the facility of the Missouri City Middle School gym. Do we have a presentation? Do we have someone to talk to us about that?
I was just gonna make a few remarks. And the, the purpose of this is to, for us to live up to our 2007 bond commitments, but also to get out of the historical preservation business, which, which isn't our, our calling. And so what we're trying to do is, you know, we're working with the county to find a partner. They're, they're interested in, in the building. What we'd be doing is investing the amount that we had allocated in the 2007 bond funds to energize the building to get started with that, but we would be spending no more than the 1.1 million that was allocated from the 2007 bond. And the, the county has agreed to take over the operation of the building and to finish out its completion. And we would have the opportunity to use it on a, on an interim basis, ad hoc basis, if we need to for, for an event here or there. But we don't foresee that need being on an ongoing basis. But the county would be operating the facility after, after it was completed.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Bassett. Do we have questions? Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes. Thank you for using the term that I coined a year or so ago. Appreciate that. So I've had some recent conversations with one gentleman who is very interested in pursuing this, this project. I understand, I understand the historical perspective. I understand the desire to have that. But reading through the, the agenda item and the explanation on the obligation from Bracewell and Giuliani, you know what I'm talking about? Okay, well. Oh, okay, okay. So, yeah, that makes sense, okay. Sorry it's late. It does not seem like we really do have any obligation. There was really nothing publicized about this, preserving this site other than for a early childhood education center, which it's not being used for. So as far as, to me, I think it's fairly cut and dry that we really have no legal responsibility from that 2007 bond program. Again, I, I understand the desire to have that. I'm sympathetic or empathetic, I guess. Empathetic is probably the better word. But my, my hesitation still remains that that's a million point, 1.1 million dollars. It's not gonna go into something else that's dedicated to educating kids. And, you know, we, we've heard some, we've seen some, some disturbing trends tonight, where we're 6.6 million dollars in the hole with, you know, healthcare that's gonna come out of operating somehow. Then we've got 4 million dollars worth of cameras for, you know, special ed programs that's unfunded. And I realize they're two different pots, okay? But at the same time, there's, there's a lot of other needs out there that are directly related to education. And I, I personally, you know, y'all, you know, think what, what, you know, you have to act the way you, what you want, but I have a hard time pushing that green button for this one. So that's just my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Do we have additional comments by the trustees?
Can I just ask a clarifying question? So this is referred to as the Missouri City Middle School gym, but it's not the gym that they currently use for PE classes or anything like that, just to clarify for people. This is a building that's not being used, and it's not, it's sort of been deteriorating, I guess, over the last several years. Is that...
That's correct, Ms. James.
Okay, so it's, it's not, the, the Missouri City Middle School kids have another gym that's connected to their school building. They probably have two gyms in there that they use for their competition in their PE classes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and... So what, so you, you indicated that we don't really plan to use this facility, or we don't have, know of use for it. What, what would be, I'm just not sure what would be then, I guess I'm going where you are, Mr. Rosenthal, what would be the purpose of investing the million dollars? If we, or, or would we have some use for it?
Well, I, I mean, I do think it's possible that we would use it. We could use it potentially for an athletic event if needed. We could use it for meeting space if needed. It's not something that we're gonna be relying on, on an ongoing basis. I think the key here is, is to try to find a, a partner that is willing to take it over and basically relieve us of, of the asset.
And how big of a space, maybe this is in the information, how big of a piece of land is this on? How big of a space is it? What's the size of it? What's the square footage of the gym itself and what's the size of the land?
I'd have to get back to you on that, Ms. James, I don't have that handy.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Mr. Verdi?
I'm thinking along the same lines of Mr. Rosenthal, Mrs. James. I'd just like to know a little bit more about our obligations. I struggle with it as well. I don't know what else to say from here, but-
So let me, you both mentioned the obligations. Let me kind of address, I guess, a little background on where we've been on this. Our options at this point, that facility is sitting fully disconnected from any electrical grid. So it's a historic building in the community that's sitting just totally deteriorating at this point, because the district, when they built Missouri City Middle School, they detached it from the old building and then tore down everything except for the gym that's standing out there. The county would like it, and they would like to take ownership of it and use it more than we need it or would use it. So in terms of obligation, as Mr. Rosenthal alluded to, there is no legal obligation for the district to spend another dime on it. What we're suggesting, though, is it was sold to the community as part of the two thousand and seven bond program, that we would be spending money, that it was included in that bond program. So it's not a legal obligation, it's more the political obligation and our belief that we need to fulfill that commitment. And I think, because ultimately, the bottom line is with that building, is we've got to figure out, because we own it. We can sit it there and let it continue just to deteriorate and become an eyesore in a fenced area that it is today, or we can tear it down and just clear the site, or we can partner to get rid of it or try to sell it in another means. But we have a partner, the county, who wants to take it, preserve it, and make it a viable historical building in that community. And so we feel like, and we've made the recommendation, that we feel like it's worth the million-dollar investment to get it off of our books, off of our commitment, no more, no future commitment from us. It has nothing to do with space utilization. If we never step foot in it again, that's fine. We will probably rarely use it. And so this isn't about our utilization in any way, it's really about getting it off of our books as, in the best way possible.
So remind me, Dr. Dupree, because I think we looked at this maybe one other time, the million dollars is not enough to get it up and fully running. Was that part of it too, was that-
Yes.
-it's only a part, a portion of what would be needed to make it useful or bring it to full use?
That is, yes. I mean, and they understand, the county understands that this, that is our limit, but their ask is that we at least put that toward getting it back on the grid, getting the HVAC, get the lights on, so that then they can move forward and take it the rest of the way on their, at their expense.
Mr. George?
Yeah, Dr. Dupree, is currently we have full ownership of this facility?
We do.
Okay, so when we hand it over to the county, is that, are we selling it or we are just giving it away?
We're conveying it to them because we can convey property to another entity.
Okay, so in order for us to give it to them, we have to spend this money to-
Well, no, we don't have to.
All right.
That was the agreement that we negotiated with them, that we're proposing for approval, which the county court, commissioner's court has already approved. They considered it, I think, a week ago or last week maybe, and they've approved the agreement on their end, you know? And so now it's time for us to consider the agreement.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. George. So I think my only comment on this would be is that I am sensitive, like Mr. Rosenthal said, I am sensitive to the community's views on this and the community's view that we sold, so to speak, the bond on investing that one point one million dollars. And the reason I'm sensitive to that is because I've engaged with a community for middle school fifteen that felt very similarly about the two thousand and seven bond, about monies in that, in that bond that were supposed to go to a middle school that ultimately didn't and then got pushed and pushed and pushed, nine years now, ten years now. So I am, I will say that I am sensitive to that. I'm sensitive to the fact that the community, like Mr. Rosenthal said, I'm empathetic to the fact that they, it's a historic building and that community views it that way. And that, and that at that time, when I wasn't on this board, that, you know, when they went out for the bond, that that's what they said they were gonna do to that money, with that money. So I'll just say that, I am sensitive to that, and that that's the way the community feels about it.
So I wanted to make a real quick comment, so this kind of goes back to what we were talking about, which we're not talking about heritage rose by any means, but just how we're spending our money, and this is where I struggle once again. I mean, as a community member, I would rather have my child with all the necessary tools to be educated versus this instance, and that's just the way that I see it. That's enough said.
Mr. Rosenthal?
I would just, when I read through the legal discussion that we were given, there was really no resolution saying that this was going to go to preserve this historic site at one point one million. So there was no real promise of that for this specific use. It was more for a early childhood center, which is not necessary. So, you know, the story really has changed. So it's not like those board members up there in two thousand and seven created a resolution that said, we're going to spend one point, one point one million dollars, and we're promising this to the community because we want to preserve this historic site as some kind of center that the county can take. So, I mean, really, I really don't think we do have any obligation, legal or political, personally. That's just my opinion from reading the legal opinions that were available to us. So again, I made my point, I just wanted to kind of clear that up. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on this? All right, let's go back up to nine D to review the proposed class size waivers for sixteen, seventeen school year. Do we have any questions on this?
I think it's important to note that we have no detail, and I think the board is aware of that, just because we're still balancing and we're gonna provide the actual detail in anticipation of next Monday's action. But if you do have questions, you know, we're happy to provide any background there.
Mrs. James, sorry.
I was, maybe you could remind us, I think we've seen this before, I didn't look it up, but the triggers for, what are the triggers for adding a new class? It sounded like some of these were, we were not using the normal triggers because we were space impaired and things like that, but I was curious about that. And then adding the aids was, is a good solution when we can't?
Yes, so President Hassan and board members, for grades K through four, the twenty-two to one is TEA's cap. And so in our district, we have some high-growth areas, particularly some, some high-growth schools where space is limited, so we cannot go beyond, we cannot add another teacher to certain buildings, as an example. So you read that in the memo. Twenty-three and twenty-four to one, K four is typically where we will stay before we trigger adding an additional FTE. So if we have three teachers on a grade level, say at third grade, we have twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-three, we wouldn't necessarily add an additional teacher there because we're one over the twenty-two to one cap in two of those classes. But if we had twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-four, then we would consider adding an aide. If we were twenty-four across the board and got a twenty-fifth student, we would almost certainly add a teacher if we had the space to do so. So going beyond twenty-four is where we begin to add FTEs.
Okay, so just, if I heard you say, in the twenty-threes and twenty-fours, you're adding an aide in those classrooms, in three classrooms, or you wouldn't stack the kids, so you'd be adding them in all those classrooms? Or it depends on the age of the students, or?
So it really, it depends on, if it was one over in each of those classrooms, we would probably add one aide, one instructional aide, and have that aide rotate between the classes.
Ah, I see, okay. Okay, when I look at these lists here, some of these schools, I think are space impaired, I would agree, but then some of them aren't. So I was struggling with following your reasoning for, for what the triggers are and what your, what the plan is. And maybe it'll make more sense when I see the numbers and actually the situations, so.
Ms. James, one thing I would interject, especially based on what you just said, is especially as we get to this time of the year, we rely heavily on the principal's judgment because some, it is purely space limitations, but in others, it's, they just can't identify teachers that they would want to bring onto their team at this point. And so they would rather bring an aide or run a little larger on the class size. So we really, this is where we partner very closely with the principals. And if they, and if they insist, and this kind of addresses your question, I think you'd sent in advance about the types of schools, the high-risk schools and different things, where we really work with the principals to make sure the kids' needs are being met. Because sometimes it is better to have twenty-four kids in a room than to have a bad teacher and put twenty-two kids in that room. So that's, there's a lot of judgment that goes into it at this point.
Right, and I understand some of the research shows also that, you know, having these class sizes, B twenty-two, twenty-four, is not necessarily detrimental to the kids. And I was, I think I did send in a question asking about that also, because that helps with the narrative in the community. The teachers see it as difficulty because they feel like I've got paperwork, I've got kids, you know, I've got twenty, twenty out of twenty-five on IEP, and it's hard to keep up. So I'm just trying to understand what the triggers are and what the balance is so that it's fair for everybody involved. Of course, we want to do the right thing for the student, and we want to make the right decision, so I'll let it go, but I, maybe somebody, maybe somebody can give me a call or whatever, just to sort of talk me through a little bit more, or when I see the numbers, I'll have a better understanding of what, what you're talking about, so thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. All right, nine E, we're gonna have some agreements, MOAs and MOUs. Number one is between Fort Bend ISD and ACE S L LLC to conduct graduation ceremonies at the Smart Financial Center in Sugar Land. This is James.
Woo-hoo! Yay!
More of a cheer than a question? Okay, number two, amendment to the post-closing agreement for land purchase and sienna plantation. Do we have questions on this one? Mrs. James?
I was having trouble finding the agreement or the amendment. Was I looking in the wrong? I don't know where to find it.
It was actually brought to my attention late today that that's one that was not provided. Legal did not get it in a timely manner, so we'll have it for you this week.
Okay, thank you.
All right, skipping over three, going to four, interlocal agreement for joint use of the, well, this is related to number three. Did we have additional conversation on the agreement for joint use of the facility?
No, just to, no, ma'am, just to show the relationship, item three has to do with the improvements and the district's commitment to the improvements, and number four has to do with the joint use, where they would be allowing us for a dollar a year to be able to use it when we would need to.
Okay.
And the county would be responsible for the maintenance and upkeep, and they would actually own the facility?
That's correct.
And they, but we would have some rights, but based on the agreement?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, E five, agreement between Fort Bend ISD and Texas A&amp;M to provide the Texas A&amp;M University School Counseling graduate students. Do we have questions? Moving on to number six, amendment to the agreement between Fort Bend ISD and Jacobs, Jacobs Project Management for Boundary Planning, Community Engagement Services, Transportation, Implementation Support, and Large-Scale Maps. Questions? All right. And number seven, interlocal agreement regarding participation in the National Cooperative Purchasing Alliance. Questions? All right, moving on to nine F, review the proposed order authorizing the establishment of at Fort Bend ISD Commercial Paper Program, issuing of the notes, and execution of credit agreements in connection. Thank you all for being here. Do we have questions from the trustees?
Yes, I have a question, and I promise to be brief, no matter how long it takes.
Thank you, Mr. Rice.
I want to thank Mr. Viasenior and Mr. Frails for their long-suffering patience in answering my questions every time. But, Mr. Viasenior, I understand, I just want to repeat what I heard you tell me earlier, that our short-term debt, our variable rate debt, a rule of thumb threshold is not to have more than twenty percent of our total indebtedness in variable rates. Is that right?
The threshold, Madam President, sorry, ladies and gentlemen of the board, yes, sir, Mr. Rice, the threshold from a rating agency standpoint is to keep the variable rate portion of your overall debt portfolio in a range between twenty and twenty-five percent. The district currently is at just a little over nine percent.
Our current policy is twenty, is a cap of twenty. That's our current policy.
Okay. And then the, the trigger, we were talking earlier, would be, did you say between two hundred to three hundred basis points?
The difference between the rates that we expect on the Commercial Paper Program, and I'm just gonna throw out a number here, maximum of one percent versus if we went out and did a one hundred million dollar fixed-rate bond issue, I would expect a true interest cost, an average rate, in the range between three and a quarter and three and a half percent.
Okay, all right. So at this time, it's, Mr. Basset, your recommendation that we move forward with this, and I'm reading on here that, Mr. Frails, you've had an opportunity to review all of our paperwork, and you find it to be in order?
Madam President, Dr. Dupree, members of the board, yes, sir, we've had, we prepared the order authorizing the creation of the Commercial Paper Program, and we have reviewed the credit agreements and related documents that are associated with them, and we agree that they are sufficient. We are continuing to finalize those, the documents as provided in the, in the order, the actual credit agreements that are associated with the two series under the program. They are substantially complete at this point, and we're very, very comfortable with those.
Okay, thank you very much. And, Mr. Basset, this is showing our, our current bond rating with Fitch as a double A plus, and S and P Standard and Poor's double A plus. Does it get much better than that?
Well, I mean, it could get better if we went up to triple A, but, but it's not, it's not necessarily worth giving up some of the flexibility we would have to give up to stay triple A in terms of the ratings. Everybody has to understand that every time we issue debt, we go out for another rating. So the rating agencies look, take in-depth a view of our, of our, everything. They ask us all kinds of questions, the economy, everything. And so we're very comfortable with where we're at from a double A plus perspective.
Just say it's stronger than battery acid.
It is definitely stronger than battery acid.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Mr. Viasenior and Mr. Frails, thank you for being here and answering questions. Okay, nine G, reviewing the proposed order authorizing the redemption or purchase for cancellation of outstanding Fort Bend ISD Variable Rate Unlimited Tax School Building Bonds. This is fun stuff, guys, come on. We have questions on this?
Does this mean less debt?
Less debt. Equals less debt. Mrs. James? Nothing?
No, I don't have any questions. I think I understand it.
Okay, we'll move on to H then. Proposed resolution approving the two thousand sixteen tax year rule based on the certified two thousand sixteen values from the Fort Bend County CAD. Do we have questions on this?
This, I have a question.
Mrs. James.
The nine point nine percent, is this the number that we used in the budget?
We actually used a, a higher number in the budget, but what we've learned since that time is that our collection trends for local collections have, have exceeded what we, what we expected in the past, and we do think that we'll be able to meet the revenue target in the current budget.
Okay, so even though we estimated with a higher percentage increase, our percentage of collections is greater, so our revenue, we expect to be on target?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
To our budget, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. I, nine I, reviewing the proposed resolution adopting the combined ad valorem tax rate of a dollar thirty-four per one hundred dollars evaluation for the Fort Bend ISD two thousand sixteen tax year. We have questions on this? We had our hearing earlier. J is proposed budget amendments. Do we have a presentation on this, or are we just going? Do we have questions on what's been presented? The budget amendments?
This is, this is, these are budget amendments for the stipend, the one ti, or the, not the stipend, excuse me, the one-time.
Retention supplement.
Retention supplement, thank you for the language, from the funds.
Okay.
And then the debt service change is from the, the tax.
Just for the additional two pennies?
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, purchases exceeding fifty thousand dollars. Number one is Curriculum Associates LLC. This is special, special education. Adaptive assessments, online diagnostic programs, supplemental, thank you for being here. Questions? Number two is the English Language Learners and Language Proficiency Assessment Committee Management System. Mrs. James.
So, indicated that we received three responses, but there are only two scored on our scoring sheet. So, I was wondering what the?
Yes, ma'am, that's, that's a typo on the, on the purchasing document. We only received two responses.
Thank you.
Number three is Special Education Services and Related Items. In the areas of speech, sign language interpreting, independent education evaluations, et cetera. Do we have questions? Okay, and I understand the administration is pulling number four, the math solutions?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we're, number four is off. Number five, Explore Learning. Oh, no, me too. All right, Explore Learning?
So, I, I did recognize a question that you sent on that?
Okay, good.
And the question was?
Cause I can't find it anymore.
Hey, just move along.
I'll, I'll be brief. You asked about the professional learn, learning associated with Gizmos and Reflex Math. And we, we do receive professional learning for our teachers in a couple of different ways. We have a TOT model for Reflex Math where, and also webinars available for our teachers. But folks in our curriculum department are trained for Reflex Math, and then they can go out and provide training to teachers with Gizmos as well. We have onsite opportunities where Gizmos comes in and trains our teachers, but we also have the luxury of one of our curriculum directors for science, or coordinators for science is a certified trainer for Gizmos, so they, she provides training to department heads and other staff members as well.
So, this is, what you're saying is this is training for the teachers that's in alignment with the, our goal of embedded professional development in their regular work week as part of their regular routine, but to enhance their teaching?
Yes, yes, ma'am, and some of it's offered in the summer as optional trainings, but, but yes, it's embedded.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Number six is for printing services, vendors through the RFP process. Do we have any questions on these? Mrs. James.
Well, okay, I try, I had trouble because the spreadsheet didn't, didn't add up quite right for me. So, cause it says the score, for example, in the first vendor, the total was fifty, but it?
Yeah, Ms. James, it didn't add up right for me either. We've, we've updated it, and the updated version will be in the version that you'll see of the board book next week.
Thank you.
But just to make sure, though, you understand, this, we didn't eliminate any of the, the vendors. I mean, all of the vendors, you know, we do, we do anticipate the potential of, of using them, so.
Okay. So, I, that's great. So, if you can update the sheet, it just seemed that, I don't know if anybody ever refers to these again after this, or if people actually think, huh, who is the, who's the number one, I'm gonna get my printing done with them. And this wouldn't, this wouldn't reflect the scores.
But, yeah, the updated version, Ms. Kaiser already has.
Plus, if I was one of these vendors, I'd be kind of offended that my score was so lame.
Okay, number seven. Raptor Technologies.
We have a couple of questions that were submitted.
Okay.
So, one is, is Raptor used in our campuses? Yes, ma'am, they are being used at every one of our campuses. And are the people that greet visitor on our campuses trained in the use of the future of technology? Are safe and secure, school department trained, the people who will be using these? We, as in IT, we support the actual physical printing and the connectivity of them.
Does it, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Does it, does this system, can you put things into it like who has custody of a child or anything like that for those types of purposes of visiting or anything like that? Or is it pretty limited?
I don't believe that it does have that kind of features.
Okay, so that has to be just known manly, manually by the person who, it's not in the Raptor system, that has to be known by the receptionist or the person who greets.
And that, that information exists within our Skyward system, so I'm not sure exactly how we can correlate between the two, but I'll find out and I'll get you back to that.
Well, cause I'm thinking if you are going to visit a campus and you're not the, you're not supposed to have contact with the child, but yet it's your biological child, and you said this, I'm going to visit my son at lunch, or whatever, you know, you'd probably be admitted, but then that wouldn't be right if you weren't supposed to be there, so, I just.
I will find out.
All those connections are sometimes problematic on campuses, so I'm just, this might not be the right technology, but there might be something else that is a good technology to handle.
We'll find out the process and procedure and get back to you.
Thank you.
Okay, number eight, Athletics Audio-Visual Equipment and Related Items. Such as wireless headsets. No questions? Number nine, Athletic Facilities Renovations. Woo-hoo, I think that was your, you have a cheer, okay. Number ten, Lawn Maintenance and Landscaping Services. You like it? Jason likes it. Okay, School Bus Purchase, CNG and Diesel. Dave left.
I know, he did, but he left a comment for me.
Okay, good. This is?
This is from Dave.
Mr. Rosenthal.
Happy to see our CNG program accelerated. From Dave Rosenthal with love.
Thank you, Mr. Rosenthal. Okay. Very good. Do you have ques, do you have actual questions?
I have a question because?
Mrs. James.
This was in, this was, you know, unfortunately, Dave, I have a question. And that is, we're doubling our plan, you know, our, we're, we are accelerating this, and so what's the rationale behind that?
Ms. James, whenever we first discussed the, the plan, the plan was to eventually have a hundred and fifty buses.
Right.
And we were gonna do fifteen the first time. We did thirty the first time, although we'll be, we'll be in line with a hundred and fifty in the coming years. We were able to get a better deal on, on the buses. We, we saved thirteen thousand per bus by, by accelerating. The thing I like about it is that it does show the state, that we would have more skin in the game, and I do think it'll increase our chances of, of getting more grants when they see us having, having that number. One of the other questions you asked is, I mean, where are we at, you know, from an oil price perspective and whatever else? Whenever we first, last updated the board on the CNG program, Brian calculated a, a diesel price of two dollars and sixty cents per gallon, which we're well below right now. But, but the economic cycle and the history has shown that, that over time, you know, we will certainly get back up above a diesel price of, of two dollars and sixty cents a gallon. So, in, in the end, it'll, it'll still make financial sense for us to do so. We won't take delivery of these buses until deep into twenty seventeen. And so, we may be there by, by that time.
Thank you, Mr. Bassett.
I have a quick question. So, any more update on the fueling stations and was that looked into anymore on?
Well, what we're gonna be doing is, we're, we're gonna have a, we're gonna use a, a station not too far from Hodges Bend initially, okay? And that's, that's where we plan on, as we, as our numbers increase, then we will, we do have some land that we can use at our facility at Hodges Bend. The, the other thing that we will think about, though, as we learn and as we figure things out, and also depending on grants and whatever else, we will probably have something in Bond twenty eighteen, you know, that would be the, for an allocation of, of a full station.
Okay. Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Brede. All right, number twelve, our last purchase is Professional Service Firm for Construction Auditing Services. Mr. Rice?
When's it gonna be done?
We're gonna, if the board approves this, I think that Mr. Adias will be able to get started with this in October, and hopefully we'll have it done in, within a couple of months. But part of it will depend on cooperation from Bartlett Cock, which is, you know, one of the issues. You know, so we will be talking to them about it, they're currently working the, they're still working the closing things out on Sullivan, and so, you know, we, we hope to not have the same kind of delays we had before.
Is the rate in this? Sorry.
That's okay, go ahead. That's okay.
Is the? Is the, is the rate in this quote, the higher rate?
Yes, ma'am, of two, two hundred and twenty dollars an hour.
Thank you, Mrs. James. Okay. Nine L. Proposed termination of the 401A Teacher-Employee Recruitment and Retention Program. Do we have questions on this, Mr. George?
Yes. It says it is established from two thousand and one, correct?
Yes.
What was the purpose? Because when you have 401, 403Bs, why we have a 401?
The purpose of this, at the same time this was done, a lot of districts in the state of Texas were implementing this recruitment and retention plan. It was basically an attendance incentive that was, that was put into place at, at Fort Bend ISD. And it was, it was, kept going for a number of years. But like many of the other districts throughout the state, they did drop it when, when budget times got, got more difficult. Several of the districts, including Fort Bend, but, and I, this is just anecdotal, I haven't seen the data myself. In the end, the, the district determined that it was not increasing teacher attendance. It was basically an additional amount for teachers that were already showing up the whole time already. And so, that was one of the reasons why the, the program was dropped. And so, whenever, even though the program ended, the funds were still in a 401A account on behalf of each of the employees. And so, we're trying to get that closed out so that those employees can move their funds to a 401, 403B.
What kind of dollar amount we are talking about, how many?
Uh, there's several hundred thousand, I mean, there's, yeah.
So, they could, they could roll over to a 403B, or?
Yes, sir, they can roll it over to a, an eligible retirement account.
Okay, okay. So, this elimination of this program, you think is the best thing to do?
Definitely, I mean, because what's happening right now is, I mean, those folks are, are paying fees that, that, that are too high, and, you know, they'll be able to, you know, have a better return if they're combining with their other accounts. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. George. Nine M. Proposed alternate TEA approvers for PIM submissions. Do we have questions about these? N, we're in the home stretch, guys. Proposed administrators who will serve as T-test appraisers for the sixteen seventeen school year. Yes. Yes, you're gonna get, give us the list before next week?
We are.
Excellent. And O, our minutes from the previous meetings. Any questions on those? I know Mrs. James has some, but she, she asks them offline.
But I will point out that the, thank you, but the July section got left out, and I didn't catch it, surprisingly. So.
I was shocked.
But Legal is on their game, and they did catch it, and so, that's why we have some, uh, July.
That's why we have P. All right, Mrs. Porter, there are really, isn't any audience left? Do we have anyone signed up to speak?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you. With that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for being here this late.
Man, I was close. Who had it?
The two of them got it right on time, yeah.
Man, I was, I said eleven-ten, so. What?